Good evening. Welcome to the March 20, 2023, meeting of the Hamblen Boris Selectmen. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is live in the Hamblen Town Hall Auditorium and being broadcast over Zoom. We are recording this meeting. Is there anyone else recording it?
Recording in progress.
Yes, Kristin Rivers for the Wilbraham Times.
Okay, please note that the Wilbraham Times is also recording the meeting, Laura. Okay, first on the agenda, we have minutes. Thank you, Pam. Minutes of March 6. Quick summary, we had some discussion about budget items, warrant. The big item was a promotion to sergeant as recommended by the police department.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have executive session meeting, minutes of the meeting of March 6 as well. Just quick summary had to do with an update from the town attorney on ongoing litigation.
Move approval of March 6 executive session minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Jeff. Next on the agenda is a discussion of the community meetings we've had regarding the fire department. And we have Jeff here from Tektron, Tekton. So Jeff, we've had two public meetings and we were wondering if you could give us a quick summary of how they've been, what your analysis of them has been, and where do you think we should go from there?
Very good. I have just a brief PowerPoint that we pulled together from the results. I will move it through quickly.
Pull the Michael O'Klow, we've heard from people.
A bit closer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Like the match game back in the day.
So, you know, some menus on top of mine here, but roadmap for today. And we'll just quickly review the initial what and why, the mission of our effort, the work that was done to date, program options that we produced as a result of some of the feedback, a little bit of a summary of attendee feedback, and then possible next steps. So, you know, we started this whole thing off with doing some prioritization exercises, working with the fire department and talking to them about what was most important for them as they think about what might be done with the fire station in the future. Of course, we looked at that and sort of evaluated the program against some of those priorities. We engaged in our first meeting with the community to get some initial high-level feedback to do a little bit of education about what was in the program and why that's important, but then to get some initial feedback about the kinds of things the community might feel was important for inclusion in a new or renovated fire station. And then, of course, we do have an option for taking this further, but that all depends on, you know, what we determine at the end of this part of the exercise about what are the right steps moving forward. So, of course, you know, we started initially with the Mitchell study that was done back in 2020. And we reviewed a lot of the information there. And of course, you had a lot of options included in that study, including just basic repairs all the way up to new construction. And, you know, there were renovation options in between. So that was our baseline, starting with an understanding of that. But we were asked to help engage in a conversation with the community to get the community's feedback on what might be important for the community in fire station delivery, whether it's just repairs and renovations or whether it's new construction and getting a sense of what the community thought was important. So again, the feasibility study was in 2020. It resulted in eight options from a simple fix all the way to new construction. The ranges were from anywhere from $2 million to $12 million. There is a note up there that, of course, that is 2020. Prices have changed a lot in construction since 2020. And then, of course, we needed community input to find the path forward. So our mission was to find the balance, meet with the fire department, understand their priorities, and have a conversation with the community to try to understand, you know, really what was affordable within the context of what those priorities are. And we did that by looking for shared priorities. So again, the study reviewed, we evaluated the existing site and building program. And then, of course, we met with the staff to prioritize those needs. And then we met with the community to understand their priorities. As part of this study, we developed three program options. And this was based on some of the feedback from the first community meeting. How do I get rid of that? Slide it off to the side. There we go. So we had developed three options. Of course, the 2020 study showed a programmatic, a total program, programmatic need of 17,172 square feet. And again, I want to emphasize, this came up during the community meetings, that when you write a program, it doesn't necessarily mean it's about a new building. It means it's a statement of the needs. And then, as architects, we take a statement of the need and we can apply it to an existing building and figure out what you can accomplish, or we can do a new building based on that. So just creating the statement of need does not in itself determine whether it's new construction or renovation. It takes further study to get to that determination. And one other thing in public safety architecture, square footage is king. It makes all the difference on what things cost. So, based on our evaluation and our prioritization sessions and our first discussion, we came up with three programming options. Option two came in at just over 12,000 square feet. Option three was just under 17,000 square feet, but still in the neighborhood of 500-plus square feet lower than the 2020 study option. And that's because some of the things that we heard back from the community was less of an emphasis on living quarters, more of an emphasis on the apparatus space and the firematic support space. And, you know, there was sort of a split decision on things like administrative offices and training spaces as well. So that's why we looked at the options. As a result of our second public meeting, there was a little bit of a poll taken. And option two was the favorite by a slim margin. Option one coming in second, and option third was sort of a distant third there. So basically, what we gathered from that is that, you know, there is a real sense that something, the community wanted to do something for the fire department, but just didn't really see the value in planning it out way into the future. And also, there was a reduced emphasis on, again, the things that I mentioned before of living quarters, sleeping quarters in particular. There was more of an appetite for kitchen dining dayroom than there was for sleeping quarters. And then, you know, a little bit, sort of a conservative viewpoint of how far into the future we ought to be thinking about apparatus planning. So again, we boiled down those options. The last thing we shared before doing some more exploration with that group was, okay, you know, here we had option, or the 2020 study, which was $12 million back in 2020 when the study was conducted. We escalated those numbers up using information that we have in the marketplace. In today's dollars, depending on whether you did it as, you know, renovation or new construction, you could be looking at anywhere from 15 to 17 million for that 2020 study. And likewise, the same criteria applying to option one, option two, and option three. Option one could be anywhere in the neighborhood of 10.9 to 12.3. Option two, 13.1 to 14.7. And option three, 14.9 to 16.6. I will emphasize again, these are ballpark numbers based on, you know, some balance of new construction and maybe some renovation construction. That doesn't mean you still don't have the ability to make decisions that influence cost. So there's still opportunities, even looking at those ranges, to be more conservative with your expenditure. But, you know, based on that programmatic intent, that's sort of the range that we see. So, high-level feedback, you know, the participants really did see a need to improve the fire station. Common goals were firefighter health, operational safety, and bay capacity. There was the greater interest in investing in mission-critical spaces and modestly improving some other facilities like, you know, offices and kitchen dayroom dining. And of course, option two was the preferred direction, with option one not far behind. We did also ask some follow-up questions. So if you started with option two, what adjustments might you make to that option? And of course, the arrows indicate really the changes from option one, that training space might be possibly increased, whereas sleeping and fitness could be even decreased from option two, possibly increasing bay space and possibly increasing a firematic support. So if you were going to take option two and fine-tune it, you know, I'd look at these criteria as well as the voting margins to make choices about that. So, possible next steps. Do nothing, it's always an option. And I would actually put in there, do nothing, you could do nothing but maybe do some repairs. That's always an option. You know, we could do conceptual design for one or more options based on the results of this community feedback. And in that, you would explore, obviously, you know, renovation options as well as new construction options, or you may just want to just pursue renovation addition options. You could go through a further programming exercise, having heard the results. And I'm sure that you've heard other feedbacks since we've done this exercise. You know, we could all sit down together and pull up the program and try to decide together where we ought to be in terms of affordability. Because, you know, when we look at even option one, it's pretty darn close to that number that was too high back in 2020. Or we could set a goal, you know, a budget goal, and I could come back and tell you what you could do for that. I have had communities do that. I think at the very first meeting that I was at, I talked about the Wilbraham Fire Station where Fran Note, the chief then, had said, you know, there was, I think, a million and a half dollars for a new ladder truck. And the chief said, I could really use improvements to my fire station over a ladder truck. My ladder truck I can make, you know, continue using. So we went through an exercise where we did a couple different options for them at different price points. You know, it didn't start with program. We looked at program as we did it, but it started with hitting a budget. So these are all options that are available to you. And, you know, I think really, you know, what I'd be interested in is, you know, what are your thoughts after the exercise we went through? And where would you like to go, if anywhere?
Well, I'll make a couple comments, and I'd invite the rest of the board to make comments as well. Jeff, my question to you was, are you concerned? And I was at these meetings, and I certainly appreciated the public support and input in them. But are you concerned that the support wasn't larger, or the input wasn't larger? Something is such a major thing, and honestly, you saw the same 20 people at both meetings.
Yes. You know, I always like to see a much broader representation of participation. Unfortunately, we find more and more often that people are not as active participants in government as they used to be. So yes, I would say that a higher representation would certainly have influenced the results of the process.
I think we started this a number of years back, and at that point, we were concerned. I think Don talked about, you know, we're concerned about safety was the first thing. We talked about various concerns about OSHA separation for firefighters getting around. And I don't know if it morphed into something bigger, but it's like, well, well, should we do this as well? Should we do this as well? And my question is, have we lost sight of the car we were looking to buy originally?
I'm glad you brought that up.
Okay. And you'll have your turn. You can talk about your car in a minute.
I actually have a presentation. Go ahead.
I know. So, but again, same thing. We talked about safety at the beginning. And as you said, we addressed some of those concerns along the way. Yep. We did some issues with equipment, with safety, with electrical upgrades, things like that. And I hate to say, should we be looking at a cleaner, smaller solution that goes to what we need? I, you know, I've talked about the fact that, gosh, if we're concerned about separation, should we just be taking the bay down on the right and building two bigger bays to the right and be done with it? And then you have the two smaller ones for smaller vehicles in the middle, two larger ones for vehicles on the right that have the separation. Now, wasn't it that you needed five or six feet on the sides or turnout stuff like that? You build them to solve that thing. And then you have some minor upgrades for, honestly, training and public room. The question got into and then expanded, well, are we going to a 24-hour operation? Are we going to be living with a call situation forever? I understand how you say, okay, are we looking to the next 50 years? That's where I think it kind of morphed out of what we were looking for at the beginning. You know, we need to replace a car, and oh, gosh, what if we have 10 kids? We need a bigger car down the road. But you can do that what-if forever, and you don't solve anything. And that's what I'm concerned, that we're not getting to a point where we can make a move here.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I think, you know, I don't know what the discussions were at the initiation of the Mitchell study. You know, I thought the study had a variety of options in it. I think if you were going to say, you know, we're not doing $12 million or $14 million or whatever the number is, that you always have options to do other things that improve the situation. I've dealt with communities that that's where they, that's where they look.
Sure.
I mean, I did, in one of, a community not terribly far from here, back around 2020, maybe a little bit before that, a study for a new fire station that came in at $8 million. And that community said $8 million is too much. And so they didn't do anything. They eventually bought another building in town that they were going to, a metal building that they were going to move the highway department into. And they came back to me and said, well, what if we put our trucks, you know, in the old highway? Because it was right next door, right next door to the fire station. What if we put our trucks in that building and then just renovated our building for office and living space? So I helped them come up with a plan for how they would do that. And they just recently went to town meeting to get $6 million to renovate the fire station they have, do some repairs and renovation to the highway department building, and to do some repairs to the metal building that they bought to become the highway department building. So, you know, it's sad that it's $6 million when they were at $8 million before, but they're getting three buildings out of the deal, you know, through renovations.
Right, but they're getting three old buildings instead of a brand-new building. So you're fixing a car when you could have had a brand-new car for virtually the same money that would last longer.
Yeah.
That's a thing.
Yeah. That's my. So just one last point. If I were, if I were asked, okay, Jeff, you know, we don't want to, we want to keep this really small and the scope finite, I would look at the priorities as part of my guidance in that. You know, I think bay space was one of those big issues.
Can we go back to that slide?
Stop sharing, unfortunately. Backwards. Too far, I'm sorry. Gone way too far. Lost my priorities here.
I saw one to the right there that had the priorities on it, where you were. No?
One more, I think. Board.
And boom, there you are.
Whoop, and then, of course, I go right out.
Okay, so you're talking the feedback to the right there, top right? Bay capacity, highest priority?
Yes, firefighter health, which is, you know, that pressurization separation between the bays and the people's space.
That's what I was referring to, yeah, exactly.
Operational safety, the congestion of the bays and bay capacity. You know, those were the fire department priorities, and those are probably, in some way, represent the major safety issues.
Can you go one more forward? Yeah, this one. So option one, two, and three, does option one cover those priorities that you listed, one, two, and three?
So if you look at this slide.
Yeah, okay.
These check marks, you know, they sort of give you a sense of to what degree it met. It's really a comparison of the initial program, but you can look across and say, you know, apparatus bays. And, you know, obviously, the 2020 study met it. The option one was satisfying current vehicles only. Option two was current vehicles and trailers. And option three gave a little bit of elbow room for the future, not as much as the 2020 study.
But that would be adding more apparatus.
That's right.
Where here, we're talking about the current fleet we have, but more size so that they meet safety standards, things like that. So we're not expanding the fleet, but we want them housed in bays that are more appropriate.
Right.
Right, so, all right.
And yeah, you know, that space around the bays is the big issue.
I'm going to kick over to Craig, and then I'll bring Hollywood on last.
I'm just taking it all in right now, so.
See, you want to share?
You put mine up. All right, we're here. Okay, there we go. That's the one. Okay. So here's my question. We've been being distracted by the shiny object, which is the 10 to $20 million building, all right? What are our real needs? Can I next slide, please? There we are.
You shared yours, and you were controlled, you know.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Okay, just saying.
Yeah, just go down, that's it. Okay, so the population of the town hasn't changed in 20 years. It hasn't. The fire station is staffed by three full-time firefighters, EMS people, and they call people on the weekends and in the evenings. And I don't think we have any argument about the fact that they do a pretty fabulous job the way they are. Total fires for 2021 was 19, and for 2022 was 24. And the majority of the calls are EMS calls now. And with town as a contracted 24/7/365 ambulance service that is out of another building. All right, next one. So this is the five-year. I don't know, happened to 22 on there, but, well, yeah. So 2018, 44, 2019, 40, 2020, 40, 2021, 19, 22, 23. And you can see the EMS calls, it kind of peaked in 2020. That's when we were transitioning from another service to the current service. And now it's down to 340 for the fire department, although Action actually has 670 calls last year. And the total number of all responses by the fire department was 538. So there's not much change in what's going on from year to year. All right, go ahead. So this is what we know. That is kind of small. But we know that the, we know that the, the first, both of the assessments by both the architects, that we needed, there was current building needs, you know, general upgrades and maintenance. And there were some life safety issues that were identified on both things. Okay, go ahead. And those are some of the issues. So those are what the first, the number, priority number one of the first assessment. And the red is what we've taken care of already. So we've upgraded the electrical system. We've replaced the generator. That's coming in June. We provided the required ventilation for the exhaust base, extinguishers and signage. We wall-mounted eye wash thing. There's an emergency, there's one emergency. There's one shower in the building, and we provided potable water. We may have taken care of the emergency exit lighting, too. I'm not sure yet. Okay, but, and this is what they said we should do. And most of this is outside work, you know, gutters, things like that, facade restoration, overhead door, that type of thing. Go ahead, I don't want to get tired. And those, they said that their reports find that all those deficiencies could be taken care of by local contractors and should be done, you know, fairly soon. But it could be done by local contractors, okay. Like we've done already and a lot of already, no. Go ahead. And so that gives us the feedback from the meeting, which was the firefighters' health, the occupational safety, congestion, the bay capacity. The other issues, response time, training and development. I think they do pretty well on that now with what they have. We might be able to just refurbish that room, officers' workspace. Possibly could create a little office. Living accommodations, I would say no because we're not doing 24/7, that type of thing. Go ahead. And again, here's the firefighter health and occupational safety, the things we've taken care of in red. So we got emergency lighting and exit to take care of, and upgrade the lighting throughout, you suggest. Which brings us to decontamination. Go ahead. And the personal protective equipment, decontamination. The National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health recommends that there be strong written policies and procedures. I don't, I think we have them. I don't know for sure. I could check with the chief. But they recommend decontamination at the incident site, which gets rid of 85% of the contaminants. They put the thing in a special bag. You throw it in the back of the truck and not in the cab. They get back to the fire station. They wash it in their gear machine there to prevent cross-contamination. Of course, there's the famous shower in an hour, you know. So this is an, this is an onsite decontamination thing for firefighter safety. It's $975. So it's one way to do it. Or we could get the portable bathtub and shower. That's a one-person unit, but they make them up to 10 persons. Okay, this is, so I'm thinking, what we really need to do is reimagine the current space use. And that's what it looks like now. The, on the left, the right-hand side is facing North Road, right? And then that yellow is where we have the old fire, the antique fire engine and the ambulance that we don't use. And if we move those, the antique fire thing and the ambulance to a Butler Building or to some other location in town, we only use the antique fire engine, you know, for parades and stuff like that, that creates enough space that could be used for the equipment, the outfit, you know, their outfit equipment. The original proposal said that we needed about 587 square feet, that's over 800 square feet, for locker space and for the SCPA equipment, you know, compressor. And the last slide, I think, is, here's some thoughts. Store the antique fire engine off-site or a Butler Building, sell the ambulance, convert that space to create locker room for turnout gear, build a shed for the two trailers, which was recommended. And this opens up the area on the, in the back of the building where the sheds are. There's already two walls. You could put two more walls, and that could be a storage space. And we could refer just to current training room and get out of it for considerably less than millions of dollars. Just a thought. I just want us to focus on the, I just think the whole, like John said, we kind of got carried away. And I don't blame the architects either, you know, that's their job to offer the thing, so that's.
Well, we needed a one-floor.
Right.
We needed a ranch, and we're on the third floor now, so.
With the swimming pool.
And I think you've got a good, good summary here. The thing, go back two, can you? Two or three? Boom, next one. Okay, right there.
Yeah, yellow.
Perhaps that. I think one of the things we started with here was, we were concerned. I think one of the things we started with here was, we were concerned about the space around the trucks.
Right.
And I think reimagining the back corner is a good idea, but I don't think it helps us with that thing. What I was talking about is, you see the slot on the right-hand side? Go back one slide, Laura. No, back one. There you go. I was talking about that bay on the right.
Yeah.
Taking that down, kicking two larger bays to the right, which takes care of your separation thing. You put the smaller vehicles in the two in the middle, maybe even putting a single door instead, where they don't have the separation, because they're not as wide as the tanker, things like that. I don't know that we've seen that type of solution, Don, I really don't.
No, no.
This gets back into what we were talking at the beginning, we're concerned with safety, OSHA. Build it bigger to the right, maybe that opens up the back, like you said, Don, with other usage there. And we're not into every.
If we open up, excuse me, Jeff, if we open up their back, that would take all that equipment off the wall and give them some more.
But it doesn't give the side thing, that's what I'm saying, if you go there, you've got that, what is it, high seat each side or something you need?
I think there's value in both those thoughts.
Right.
You know, getting wider bays is important.
Right.
But also getting clutter that fills up, you know, what space you have. I've got another project where, you know, what we did is put additions on to get all of the FireMatic support equipment.
Right.
Turnout gear, all that, off the floor. They couldn't afford brand-new bays, but at least getting that stuff off the floor made, meant that the space that they did have was clear and free.
The advantage of expanding to the north, if you will, it doesn't take away from any parking lot, doesn't, the septic and wells are all to the south. So again, we're not relocating any of that type of thing, we're not, there's no ground piping to worry about. It's actually land we own without a setback problem. So I just wonder if that's the type of solution that gets back to what our original charge was. How do we make it safer for the firefighters? Without building a three-story firehouse.
And getting, and the point about the addition, like making the trailer shed, that's the whole idea, to get this stuff off the floor and off the walls, so that.
I think moving that stuff off the floor into the back only works if you have a day space that's coordinated with that gear, because you don't want to go through a labyrinth to get the gear to get back to the trucks. And that, and that's kind of how I, maybe I'm just picturing what you guys are saying wrong. But you know, where the current day space is, and they have to run all the way around to the other side of the building to get back into the front side of the building to get to the trucks, you need a, like a day space in the back of the building instead of in the front of the building.
That was one thing.
Still need that area of space in the back.
That was one thing we saw we liked about the Warham layout, wasn't it, that we had, they had access to everything around the back of it.
And then when they built that, they encompassed the, you know, the day spaces and the living quarters around the apparatus bays.
Easy access.
Yes.
Right, right. So now that we gave you another thing to think about, Jeff, what do you think?
Well, you know, going back to the priorities, you know, the bay, the operational safety and, and the bay space there, you know, I think that, that takes off some of those very nicely. It is, you know, very much a compromise from, you know, what you would do if you were building a brand-new, you know, standard compliance station. But, you know, it's a step up. I think it's a perfectly valid suggestion to explore.
Is it something?
Why don't we pursue it?
That's the next question. So you have the experience to flesh out kind of what we said here, I think. Is the board suggesting that we ask Jeff to go along with Plan 17, if you will?
17.
Let's see.
And just come back with it. Again, basically, this is also going along with what you saw in the community assessment.
Yeah.
Let's focus on this. We have kind of a direction from the three of us, can we kind of target it that way? I think you've heard what Craig said, it's important that, even if we're talking about, how do we make sure we have access to it from everywhere? But again, without tearing it down and rebuilding from the ground up, can we use the bones and do something like that?
I think, I think you can, yes. Yeah, you know, obviously, it takes a little bit of exploring from a design standpoint, you know.
I don't think it's 20.
I spend several days scribbling until I start to feel like, you know, the relationships are working, but.
I don't think it's $20 million either, do something like that.
No, I wouldn't think so.
Right.
You know, the weird thing that, you know, I have seen in the marketplace, let's be careful when I say this, is it used to be renovating was a lot cheaper than, than adding on. I can't tell you how many projects where we've done a study and done it both ways and found the prices comparable. However, I'm gonna caveat that saying that there are ways of looking at how you utilize the existing space that can, that can save you real money. And I think your idea of keeping those two bays, you know, bays for smaller vehicles, getting the equipment off the sides of those bays makes good sense. And I don't think that that, that becomes a crazy costly renovation.
Okay. Well, like you said, it's surprising, we've seen this before, you open up a wall, God knows what you find behind it. And that could, you know, we don't think, and I don't know if the chief could speak to that, we don't think we have an asbestos concern here at all, right? We're not moving those.
How about the ceiling tiles, there was an issue about that, they're supposed to be fiberglass, have they been replaced?
That's in the meeting room?
That's a throw.
A throw? Help me make a renovation, Bob will get you a huge grant to cover everything.
Yeah, that's the other thing I was thinking.
Well, fortunately, so, we heard that the chief is going to a legislative breakfast or fire chief breakfast on Thursday, you're going with him, so. And you're coming back with a check?
Come back with a check.
Nice, or cash?
Free breakfast, come back with a check.
Fine.
We, we, we have heard rumblings that there are some grant possibilities for public safety.
I'd like, personally, I'd like him to explore what we talked about today.
So you'd like to see, the way you presented it earlier, four bays off the front? You said need the two in the middle, and then that really small one on the right, and then one next to it?
Well, I would say get rid of the small one on the right, because I don't think it helps us with the larger apparatus.
And the one big one.
I'm saying it may even change the roofline, you're going to the right and adding two larger bays to the right of those two small bays, which handles.
So that's four bays off the front.
Four bays off the front, correct. And now, you may look at the square footage of the apparatus we have and say, you know, we can take care of everything with one bigger bay to the right, going down the back, whichever, and so you don't need to. And maybe that helps with what Craig was saying, if we don't go further out to the north, you keep better access to where you're going to. I think his point is correct, that you need to make sure that travel lane inside the building is, is appropriate. You know, you get from point A to point B without hindrance.
Do you have any sense of range of what is affordable for this community?
I know Don's well off, but, you know, I'm not sure about Craig and I.
I mean, I guess my, you know, you know, I can simply explore those bays and, and the suggestion about equipment space, or I could give you, you know, one or two options about other possibilities, but, you know, I just want to know where your, where the threshold is where I'm wasting your time and mine.
I would say from our board standpoint, we always thought that $17 million thing was pie in the sky, you know. I think we, kicking it around, we always felt this would be in the single-digit million project. Now, would you say, you know, whether it was anywhere from two to six, you know, probably not two, but I think with a renovation like this, we're not taking it up to 10 at all.
I think you're looking at eight to 10.
You think so? That much?
Yeah, I mean, I gotta run numbers, but everything's expensive these days, you know.
Yeah, but these guys are pretty capable of doing some of their own work, so just throw it out there.
I will, if we explore that, it will be outside of my contract.
That's the next thing, so Bob, speaking of that, we have, you know, a contract where Jeff has done this for the amount that we've, whichever. How much? I, I already submitted an option on your original proposal, darn if I pulled it up today, but you already have a number from me to do a conceptual design based on the results.
Yeah, I remember that, 50 bucks.
Yeah, it was a second.
I think it was more than 50 bucks.
That's fine.
And refresh me, how are we funding Jeff's work right now, was it ARPA or was it a grant?
His work is ARPA, right?
ARPA.
Okay. I'm gonna see if I can pull it up.
I can pull it up here too, I think.
Yes, I approve me to sign in.
Remember when you submitted that, here, yeah, okay, here we are. 9:27. And your, the option? Says conceptual design and probable project cost estimate. Project promotion, 15,000. Is that what you're referring to?
That would be the number, yes.
About a third of that's gonna go to my estimator, maybe a little more.
We'll give you, we'll give you 12. This is like the art of the deal, right, is that what we're doing here?
Yeah. See, in, in my game, the art of the deal works this way, you take away scope, I give you, I take money off the, you know, the fee. You don't want me to do the public promotion, we can reduce the fee.
Fine. How do we feel about going with ARPA? Get forward.
Let's get it done.
So vote of the board to authorize Jeff for option one on the scope of services, basically.
Go move.
Second.
On favor of appropriating 15,000 from the ARPA fund for Tectron.
Aye.
Thank you.
We don't need to revise the contract because it's here.
Right, because he was, it was already presented as an option, so.
Do you have a timeframe that you're interested in?
We meet every Monday, so next week is fine.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen.
Do you think?
I'm actually going on vacation, middle of next week, but it will take longer than just a week or two to do this.
What's your ballpark, middle of April, end of April, what do you think? Where do we have, middle of? Yeah, probably end of April. Okay. So let's pencil you in for the end of April then.
That'd be good timing, because there may be questions at the annual town meeting in May.
Ah, okay, okay. That can work.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much. Good job to you and your staff.
Oh, thank you.
I invited them all to join me again tonight.
Really?
They said, they had too much fun last night, so, you know. They, they were tied up on other obligations, but thank you. We did have some of the fire department here, did you gentlemen have any comment you wanted to make, now we've wrapped everything up?
Up here if you're gonna, please, so it's recorded.
I think you gave us a no.
Oh, okay.
Jeff, thank you. Next, we have the chief of police.
May I ask you?
How you doing? So good evening.
Good evening.
Bring before you Matthew Chaplin. One T.
One T.
One T. I was told.
Blame my mother every day.
Matthew, Matthew comes to us from a local police department with several years of experience. He's post-certified, so he certified in Massachusetts as a full-time police officer. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He went ahead and came in to fill out application for us, wants to come over to become a full-time officer with the hand of police permit, Todd Ely's replacement, who is leaving us on Thursday, for 36 years. Matt has passed a medical examination, psychological screening for a police officer. And I'm bringing Matt before the board for an appointment as a full-time police officer to take over Officer Ely. I did pass some paperwork to you, to the board prior to the weekend to review. And Matt does live in town with his two children and his wife, which is a nice plus. We haven't had a local police officer from the town for a while. And so I would ask that the board appoint him to our, as our next full-time police officer.
All right, was your thought that he would, obviously Todd's last day is this week, effectively?
I would ask, effective tomorrow, he can start his field training. Probably take three weeks field training on each shift, get released, and then he would be going to our third shift.
Okay. We have a good relationship with our neighboring towns, Long Meadow, I'm sure, sorry to lose you, but not gonna cause any problems, I'm sure.
No, unfortunately, I'd be the fourth person to leave this year from Long Meadow. But the main reason I'm leaving is for family. I got, I gotta see my kids and wife more, and it's working in Hampden, the place I live in, I moved here three years ago, 2020, right before the pandemic started. So lived through a pandemic, got accustomed to being at my house a lot, and Hampden's small-time charm is just, we fall in love with the town. And I thought to myself, you know, 16 years in, I got about 16 to go, I can do this. And Hampden, you know, policing is the same for the most part, Long Meadow, community policing oriented, same as Hampden, which I like to do. I figure, let's give it a shot.
I like what you said there, I mean, our focus is community policing, that's key, you're gonna honestly run into a lot of people that you know. And pull over some people that you know, and it's all important how you treat them.
Yes.
So third shift probably, Scott?
Yes.
Make it tough on the family, but at least quick to get home.
Yeah, it would, it would work out well, since 2009 was the last time I worked the midnight shift, but it would work out well, getting home for 7:00 AM to get my kids ready for daycare. They both go to daycare, and then my wife works, she's a nurse practitioner in Manchester, Connecticut.
Oh, wow.
And so she's got a decent drive, and sleep for a couple hours, get up, get ready, get the house ready, and go pick them up from daycare, and, you know, but if.
Sounds like you got the plan done.
The whole thing with Long Meadow is, you're getting, there's a lot of forced overtime, and I'm a big overtime guy, but when you're forced, especially on the weekends, working eight to eight, Saturday, Sunday, you don't see your family at all, and then the week starts up again, and it's, it's getting to be a lot.
Well, Don and I remember those days, we don't envy you that, it's been a while, Craig, Craig still lives it a bit, but.
I think the, when I worked third shift, it was far better than working second shift, because you had that ability to come home, get things ready, and still get your day going. You could get a nap in here and there.
Sure, sure.
So. But it's like a perfect scenario, you know, move to town, position comes open and.
Yeah, I didn't know about last year's position, or else I would have applied to that one too, so.
So any, any chance, chief, that we can get him on bike patrol?
A good possibility, coming, coming forward with the, yeah, we can, we can find a bike.
On the resume, bike patrol.
He's got a great resume, absolutely.
Actually.
It's all good coming from home, but going backup thrasher might be a better.
Well, Long Meadow, the last couple of years, we had an e-bike. That is amazing, pedaling up hills on an e-bike, it just propels you, it's, it's excellent, so. And I would frame the whole, if we do a bike program, I would frame it towards East Long Meadow style. They drive a cruiser with a bike rack on the back, go to a certain part of town, and he rides in that area, and if a hot call comes out where local officers are needed, you get to your cruiser quick and you go to the scene. So for Long Meadow, it's if we had an extra guy, you'd take the bike, the whole town, which is only nine square miles.
You'd probably cover the whole town on a bike, an electric bike in probably five minutes here.
Yeah, as long as the battery doesn't die.
Let me ask you this, as a, as a line officer, what do you think of the whole post thing?
I think change has been, is, is good in this aspect. You know, you can't, the training in the academy has gotten a little stale and it's ever-changing. And it's just experience, and especially nowadays, officers, you need to learn how to, you know, speak with, younger officers need to learn how to speak to people, because you, there's two sides to every story, you show up to a domestic or a car crash, people arguing, they look to you for the solutions, and you gotta be able to talk to people. So I think that's, that's a major part, and the post, police reform, they do the classes, they do the online classes, everything, trying to change it up to make it better. And that's the whole goal for everything, is to make policing better.
Okay. Mr. Davenport, or Mr. Revest?
I'm Mr. George. You wanna do it, you want me to do it?
No.
So chairman, I move that we appoint Matthew Chaplin to the position, to the position of full-time police officer underneath the chief's discretion, effective tomorrow?
Yes. I assume you say he's already gone through everything, but we'll put it into the subject for all certifications required.
Correct, which he has passed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. Very much. Welcome aboard. Thank you very much.
And we'll be there for the pizza.
Don't, don't, don't listen to those guys.
We'll be there for the pizza.
Picture?
Thank you.
They wanna, they wanna picture.
They wanna picture.
Do that. All of us? You had that for first year.
Oh, boy, here we go. Should've been.
It's been twenty-four years. We should give the chief a lifetime achievement award for poaching.
Yeah.
All right, what do we got next? Coach?
Document management. I'm meeting with Ryan Quimby tomorrow in East Long Meadow. He's gonna give me a demonstration of the laser fish system, so.
Have we talked to Entree yet either, to see what they can offer?
Yes, I have. I've talked with them.
We were going to set up a meeting with, I thought Robert Barishol was gonna meet with Craig and I at some point and talk about our.
I talked to Barim today.
Right, but we also talked about.
And then learned that the communication had already been to Robert. So, Robert, they have some comments to make, which we can bring in next week. Pam talked to Robert, I talked to Barim.
Right, but we were going to, Craig and I were gonna meet with Robert, talk about FY twenty-four. What's your idea for the scope for tech work in Hamden? I thought we'd touch on that time. That's been postponed a couple of times, but.
We're, we're talking about laser fish and.
Well, my point is, we were bringing it up in that discussion with him.
Better alternative.
Yeah, okay. All right, selectmen budget and warrant review. And this is where I thought we could throw it up there.
Put it up there.
Laura, go.
Could have a print also. It's printed. Sorry, it's down on the machine.
All right, so you had an opportunity to meet with the advisory last week and then took off right after. We're all searching, where's Bob?
We sat here for like, what, fifteen minutes?
We finished the meeting and like, where is Bob?
You were coming back up here. We went through the, some of the issues that we've already discussed. Mentioning the stormwater question, mentioning the TA salary question, and a couple of other items. They seemed agreeable to what was presented. So, I think what we need now is to get a good number for stormwater. Now, that fifty thousand would be part of it, I assume. Pam has, not Pam, Jane has put the number for, assuming we have the required four inspections per year in those homes where there's a PFAS issue.
Let's finish the stormwater. So, we have a quote for fifty.
Fifty.
Similar to what we've had in prior years, forty-six, fifty, something like that. And you're putting a number in of how much for stormwater? How much?
Well, we, that would be.
On page?
I think it's page three, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's off the screen. No, that's.
I shouldn't have put fifty in.
So, we have fifty, but there'll be other expenses.
That's my point. Should we just call, should we just call it sixty?
Why is there gonna be other expenses?
Well, that's, you know, we. I just, I just looked at this contract today, so I haven't.
Are there, aren't there things that Mark does as part of it? Whether it's Culver marking and stuff like that, catch basin work, but not much.
But he's got that in his, he's got that in his budget.
Is it in his budget?
He's got forty-five thousand in catch basins.
No, that's the regular catch basin. I mean, that's the cleaning he does every year. Some are in the district, some aren't. He rotates through like a third of the town every.
I don't think he puts, I, I think it's.
Like thirty-six thousand. But not every catch basin is in the stormwater district. So, should we roll, round it up to cover some minor expenses? Does that forty-five, seven, every year we've done this here, has that been the quoted amount from time bond every time?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I think you put the fifty in, we'll be fine.
Fair enough. Okay. You had shown them a hundred last week? You had shown advisory a hundred on the report last week?
I showed them a hundred for the inspections, and I had a hundred in there for stormwater. But I said, you know, I thought we had some overlap with inspections.
Yeah, okay.
Clarified, because Jane was not.
All right, so they're aware that the, the number will be fifty going forward?
Right, when she came back, I clarified that she had put over with the stormwater number over with the transfer station.
Okay. Now, can you go to the slide that covers the transfer station inspections? The water district, scale down. Nope, go back. Refer to station testing, yeah, there it is.
So, you got transfer station.
So, can you, can you scale that down, Laura, too? So, we see it. We're just, there we go, okay. Craig, you wanna touch on this? The increase?
Yeah, just for the PFOS testing. We've already gotten a couple bills rolled in, right? So.
Well, we could have some savings if we get a project done, but.
Right.
Right, but we, we need to have it in there just in case.
Right, we need to have it in there, yeah.
And we have that quote from, from the operator there, that how much it was gonna cost Fabri, yeah.
Also, we got a message, just looking at the website, got a message this past week, Thursday, I think, from the website provider that they're going to go up their fee.
Let's just finish the transfer thing.
So, the, the quote we had from Fabri, we should put that in for the stormwater, just to have it covered for now because we don't know if we're gonna get it rolled into the project or testing, you know. District expansions, obviously, that can happen overnight, so we have to make sure we're covered at least, you know.
Right. What I was thinking is that, like Craig said, this should be the number we carry in the budget. And if we get the district work done, we can always touch on that number in October, reduce it before the tax rate is set.
Yeah.
But we need to be covered in case it doesn't go forward. Like you said, it's seventy thousand just for testing, right? Yeah.
It could be closer to seventies and ninety.
That's just the testing, that's just the testing.
Yeah.
Not analysis on top of it, yeah, sure. And right now, we don't have anybody that needs remediation.
No remediation yet, right? You know, six months down the road, that could change, and then we're gonna have to step in and supply water.
Or they might change their limits, too.
It's pretty small, in the trillions.
So, Ty &amp; Bond right now is the only firm among the four that seems interested. Actually, the others not only didn't seem interested, they said no.
Right.
So, soon as we get a number in from Ty &amp; Bond, I'll bring it right in, we'll get them started, and then we can start.
Right, I, I was emailing with Peter Zalinski today. He's gonna come to our water district meeting.
Yes, right.
But in April, I don't believe it's the next one. But as far as testing goes, we still should have the testing number in there.
We should have the number in there for testing for the whole year.
Right. And then, and then we need to figure a way to pay for the testing that's inside this year.
Right.
Right, yeah. Because that exceeds.
That's the issue, yeah.
Right, yeah.
There's now two sources of money for projects like this. And so, I think I sent to you over the weekend, an announcement from the state that there's another pot of money available, clean water. So, I'm gonna go after whatever we can get and hope that we can pay for some of the testing. But we should still keep the number in the operating.
Right, yeah, and we have that quote from Fabri, so we should just roll that into the stormwater budget. I mean, I'm sorry, the transfer station testing budget.
The one thing about that, I made that point before. If you're waiting on money from the state and you're spending money in anticipation of it, you need a town meeting article to give permission to borrow in anticipation of, correct, Don?
Yeah.
So, ARPA at least gives us the flexibility to write the check for the money we have now. Then, what I was told by the accountant, is if the money comes in from a grant later, you can reimburse ARPA from that without authorization, so.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good thing, but don't, you can't spend that in anticipation, without authorization.
My question on that, though, doesn't ARPA have to be spent or calculated by a certain timeframe?
End of twenty-four.
No problem at all.
End of twenty-four.
End of calendar twenty-four.
Yeah.
Okay, so, my question is, if we're gonna get money in before that, to replenish ARPA? The way that the state's, where the state's going, are we gonna see that money in time? That's my question, you know, how are we gonna replenish ARPA?
Good question.
That's why we're doing that extra sidewalk past Don Collins' house, yeah.
We'll be just putting that sidewalk all the way to Boston.
East West Trail?
Hiking all over town. So, yes, I, I would say we agree, you know, go ahead and pursue any other funding sources. But the key thing here is Craig and his department, John are gonna have a meeting on the eleventh.
April.
With at least the vendor who's interested in proposing engineering work, which is good. At least they understand the scope of the work, because they've worked on it before, right?
Yeah, April eleventh.
The biggest thing, so you've added Board of Health Fund. So, the report from, talk about the thing. The report from the school committee meeting was that they have a number. I think our number is based on the fact so far that Wolverhampton voted a lower number than they were requesting, which brought our number roughly in the two fifty range. But that the cap.
Million, right?
Pardon me?
Wolverhampton voted a million?
A million, yeah, less than the one point eight, right. So, that brings us to two fifty. But that their capital needs were gonna be submitted as a different number. Is that gonna require a warrant article just for the capital part, which I believe it should? In conversation, in conversation with people in the advisory, they would prefer a menu vote per item.
I was gonna ask you, are they gonna make articles for every item?
That's the thing. I mean, I've seen that in the past. The problem is that forty percent of the people are in favor of each of the articles, and none of them pass. And that's a danger.
Just understand, we're gonna put the assessment in the operating budget.
As always.
And when they come in with their capital request, the advisory committee is talking about a menu for the override.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, no, no, no. Keep in mind, I don't think the number they were talking about is gonna require an override. They just want a warrant article to authorize it.
That's what Wolverhampton.
How's the menu fit in there?
Wolverhampton Finance Committee suggested that they do like an à la carte method.
Right, but I'm saying, I don't think it requires an override to fund it, you know, right. It's just a warrant.
We took the override, right, placeholder out.
Right, but it's still a warrant article. And the question was, Craig said, is it gonna be?
We would have separate votes on, in a menu fashion?
My question then is, is it separate warrant articles for each part of the capital thing? Or can you do it inside one?
Yeah, I think that would be the case, that you'd have to have one for each capital project.
I mean, I don't, I don't think you could say there's five projects that one gets the most vote.
No, no, but I mean, it's almost like we did with the CPA things. Remember, Doug would go through, boom, boom, inside the same article. If that's appropriate, you're not adding five articles.
I'll look into that, but, I mean, I've done menus for override.
Right.
Menus for projects like this, to see what's the best way to do that.
Well, basically, will the town vote to authorize to raise an appropriate money for, boom, 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 railings? For the wireless access ones, you know? Is each one a separate warrant article, or?
Well, I, I'm thinking that, assuming the town council agrees, we could say to raise an appropriate borrow, et cetera, or this, and then you go, and further, to raise an appropriate borrow, or use available funds for this.
Warrant article for the following capital needs.
All in one article, yeah.
Each which requires a separate vote, and just write the article like that.
I think we've done that before.
CPA typically, you know, because they're always like lumped in one article, you know? Okay.
Yeah, those are off of the high school.
We expect to get.
The biggest funding thing we're looking at right now in the budget is probably the dump truck, right?
Yeah.
Two fifty, two twenty, something like that.
Two twenty-nine or something like that.
More like two fifteen, I think. When do we, do we expect to get the capital proposal from regional school system?
I thought they had emailed that to us a while back. Oh, we do need to set a date to close the warrant. If you can get.
April tenth is what we talked about earlier today?
Well, we did, if, let's get the clarity on what we need for this warrant article first. Although we can close it just for new article, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't count as adding our, we're just not accepting any new ones at this point, you know? Are you guys good with closing? No, we can't close on the tenth. The advisory meeting is on the tenth. We should close the warrant next week. I think at this point, yes.
Yeah, then we do, then we just fill in the numbers after that.
Right. I mean, if something major comes along, we open, add, and close again, right, yeah.
As far as fiber optic borrowing goes on here, I think you were talking with Ryan, say, right? When National Grid was ghosting us for a while? Not.
We did get an email that they're optimistic about Verizon now coming through for us.
I'm not hopeful we'll have numbers for, for the meeting, so. I saw that, yeah. But that, that's underneath this current phase, that just comes out of that grant.
So, the question would be, this would be a significant, let's assume we don't get grant money. This is gonna be a significant investment by the town.
Right.
Would that be rejected in the fall? In other words, if we don't have anything ready for this town meeting, we have to wait a year? That's what it seems. I would think there'd be people who would stand up and say, you're proposing a very significant borrowing at a, at a special town meeting? Not appropriate.
Yeah, the only time I can remember something like that was actually at the high school. We had a separate meeting for that, but of course, it was attended by five hundred people. We had overflow.
We did, yeah.
I think the key part here, and this is what I think the board said before, keeping it at the annual town meeting, so at least it's informative, so people are prepped up, this could be coming at the fall. You know, we're doing that for the senior center and for this as well, you know, you give a status.
You know, Article One is always town reports. We could have, we could have the committee make a report for the town meeting under Article One and tee up something in the fall.
Well, I mean, Article eighteen is, or take any other action relative there, too. You're voting no action, but let me explain what the roadmap is going forward, right? Yeah.
Yeah. What about, what about the opioid settlement stabilization account? We're gonna get a lot more money, I mean.
Not a lot more.
But I mean, more money.
But, here's the issue. The issue is, the funds that we receive over five years.
Right.
Two to three thousand a year, although this second allocation might be more than that. And in order to keep the money segregated, which we have to do, because you can only use the money for programs to address drug addiction. And so, we can't let this flow into the general fund.
But you get, we get, we have other accounts that are separate. We have the police gift account, the fire gift account that, you know, people write a check for, to the fire department because they, you know, did a great job saving their cat or whatever. They didn't require town meeting vote to establish those accounts, and they don't expire on an annual basis. How come this can't be the same thing?
Well, it can be. The word is, among town administrators, is that this is what the DOR prefers. Now, I have a, I sent a message to Zach Gray, Zach. You know.
Yeah, a guy.
Today, I sent him this afternoon, I'll have something tomorrow on that. Whether it's, because the, the sense was that this is something that's gonna be required by the DOR. If it isn't required, we'll just do a special revenue account.
It may be part of, it may be written into the settlement.
Zach Blake.
It may be written into the settlement that it has to be kept separate and used only, you know?
I know it has to be kept separate. I know it has to be kept separate, so that it can be identified and they can verify that it was used for the purposes that are authorized.
Okay, Article 13.
Now I understand the fire.
Now you understand why you have such trouble spelling it different ways. I think one of them is right, one of them is right, I think it's the lower one.
Yeah.
I think in the text of it, it's correct, the top one, yeah.
The fire department has them as well.
Police, fire, town hall, Becky.
She's just bringing up the, I don't know what.
No, I know what it is, I'm just saying, you spelled it wrong in the title, that's all. I think it's a total of ten or eleven of them, roughly. Between the fire, the police, Becky, this place. Do they have it at the park?
Oh, we're, I'm sorry, you're talking about the defibrillators.
Yes.
No?
There are four in the fire department, there's one at town hall, there's one at the senior center, and five at the police department. So we have to, we have to allocate funds for eleven of them. Whereas we thought a few, a few weeks ago, it was only gonna be for the five in the PD and then one here.
No, we've been doing them all, when we went for the new purchase before, we had money left over in the warrant article to pay for the maintenance on an annual basis, and now that's expired or ran out. So this is replenishing it, if you will. All right, so I think the warrant's in pretty good shape at this point. Any questions on it? Okay.
All the departments have been asked several times, as you know, as you've tuned in the staff meetings. So they've had fair warning that they have something that should be submitted.
Okay. We have a request for another extension to the inner government, Don, I went through the minutes and this is one you did a year or so ago.
Oh, yeah, the tri-town.
It's an annual thing, basically, the tri-town thing. I talked to Sandra Sheehan, who's the CEO at PDTA, and said, what happened? She said, the lawyers just hung it up and didn't get it to you guys in time.
It's such a difficult document.
Well, that's it, yeah, exactly.
You can't sign that document.
Well, I did make the point that also, you know, it still says two-town trial. What would it take for two more letters, really? But, so I need a vote to authorize extension.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four riders is what they had, Don. Four, four riders so far, yeah.
Okay.
Great.
We just extended that, so.
All right, now, a good time.
Bond report on the townhouse assessment.
Tie and bond report. Are these tie and bond on, or are they?
We can bring it up on the screen.
You said it before.
Tie and bond on, or are they?
Did you invite them?
It's also, it's also in the.
Did you invite them to the?
No, did we invite them?
Oh.
So can we do it next week?
And can you invite Yvonne and? Please, okay, so we have them in the conversation.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All right, yeah. Otherwise, otherwise we're just looking and going, hey, nice typing.
We're gonna skip it, so, so can we invite them next week?
Please. Otherwise, we're just going, nice typing, thank you. All right, correspondence, correspondence. Bob, you did, or Pam, you did forward that notice from the SJC to town departments, I saw, about public conversation? Yes, okay. Again, same thing, it's only if a board has public comment on their agenda, and so far, I've only seen parks that actually put that on their agenda. So, as Don said, all thanks one parent talking about a coach, that should be a good comment. We've seen it before. Selectmen reports. We have planning on Wednesday, they're going to be hopefully voting on a firm to do the master plan if they were able to get revised quotes inside the appropriated amount at this point. So, they would change the scope of services to meet the budget amount. COA has been pushed to next week, that would have been meeting tomorrow. I know we have the presentation, MVP presentation tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
We would encourage as much participation as possible. You put out the Zoom code to everybody. Great, so.
Every member of every board and every commission has been.
And I saw, Don, thank you for putting it on social media as well.
See what happens.
Right, I think it'd be better if you posted it on the Village Food Mart page, you might get more people signing up. Cookies, yeah, right.
That's the first item in my report, if you're done, I mean.
No, we've got other, Don.
Strategic planning, planning committee met, we've got it narrowed down to ten options, utilizations.
They started at 130.
Well, we started at 135, and right, right now, we're, I mean, what we tried to do is, there's overcrowding of some of the schools, some of the schools don't have it, we try to keep grades to transition so the kids don't transition so much, and some of the schools now, some of the kids have to move five times in their course of seven years in the school system, so kind of narrow that down. And so the next thing is they're meeting with teachers' union, teachers, teachers' union, administrators, and then they're gonna meet with the, have meetings for the parents over there.
So do some of these scenarios require amending the regional agreement?
Most of them do.
Because of the minichog usage, yeah. So you're talking long-term, this is not this year, this is.
Yeah, I probably think it'll be this year, no.
Yeah, okay. Craig?
We already went over a bunch of the PFOs and other things. I did talk to Jane today about transportation bags and we're good for this year.
Okay.
So we don't need to budget for those or purchase those.
So you think Enterprise Fund will be pretty much self-funded at this point?
And then, Parks and Rec, I think it's being tomorrow.
Okay, and I saw on their agenda that they're, they're meeting early so that they can attend the MVP meeting at seven, which will be up here in the auditorium, another selfless plug right there for that. So, all right, Bob, you got anything?
I do.
My gosh, Bob's here for the town administrator report.
I am.
Gosh, first time in weeks, right? Not gonna let it go, Bob.
I know, I have to read it to you. Because apparently it isn't on the printer, but tomorrow night is a very significant meeting. The town, in cooperation with East Long Mallow, has had a grant to study vulnerability to severe weather and flooding in the town. And it has resulted in a review of some 35 culverts, targeting the top 10 that need to be improved, making the town eligible, further eligible for grants to address the culvert issue, and then secondly, they are promoting some of the more natural means to control flooding. Obviously, all of us live in communities where we pave over open land, and to the extent that you pave over open land, there's less land to absorb rainwater. And so one of the things that will be happening here and other communities in the future is that they'll be doing rain gardens. Actually, the stormwater people were talking about a rain garden at our last meeting near the, near the police station. So these, these are ways that we can restore the ability to absorb rainwater, number one, and number two, we can handle it better with improving, improvements to the culverts. Well, out of this study came the need for replacement, not only of the culvert under the East Main Street Bridge, but we saw that there was a fair amount of concrete spalling and that the bridge itself needs to be replaced. It is not unsafe now, but clearly it needs replacement. And so as a result of this study, we are submitting another request to the Commonwealth for $400,000, it'll be three to $400,000, to design a new bridge. Once that design is completed, it can go on to the tip program. And so the town can get a bridge without having to, the taxpayers in the town having to pay for it. I have another meeting tomorrow with the state officials in Springfield to talk about this funding. They want to know more about it, and I think we're going to be in reasonably good shape to get more money to do the real design for that bridge, the engineering work for the bridge, then ultimately get it on to the tip and replace the bridge without cost to the local taxpayer.
And then, and then we still have the question about the other two bridges they're talking about. The South Road Bridge, not the main bridge, we're not talking the one at Chapin South, but the little one up on South, plus where the state came in at the Rock-Adundy Bridge, telling us, oh my gosh, it's bad, but they don't know why.
South Road is eligible for the small bridge. South Road is eligible for the small bridge program.
Right.
East Main Street is not, it's too, it's too large, so. Three bridges are gonna be addressed, one way or the other. Whatever the state decides to do at Rock-Adundy, that's their expense. I'm sure they'll do good work. And then we're applying, we have applied for money for the South Road Bridge. So this will be another step for that. So this is an important meeting, and it's gonna be basically a brief presentation by the consultant, and then comments and questions from the public as to what their thoughts are about flooding in the future. The town's been fortunate not to have a serious flood for about 15 years. But, you know, we are, we live at a time when there are obviously severe weather events happening all over the country, and so it's fair to assume it's gonna happen here again, so we need to plan for it. Well, I've updated the ATM and the warrant. I, I put on here that we're gonna sign it on April the 10th, but we're gonna move it back to next week.
Yeah, because I think we want the warrant buttoned up before advisory has their meeting on the 10th, so.
There's now a broadband coalition with communities across the Commonwealth. And they have regular on Zoom sessions. I have not participated yet, they're having their third session this week, and I'm, I've joined the group, so. Try and keep pace with what's happening in other communities. Right now, it involves Chelsea, Dartmouth, Fairhaven, Falmouth, Milton, New Bedford, Quincy, Taunton, and Wilbraham are in this coalition, so see what they can help us with. Burem was in today, and he set up the spare laptop so that we now have the capability of running two Zoom meetings in town halls simultaneously, one here, one down in the Melville room. I think the next, next time that may happen would be the 27th, when the Government Study Committee is gonna be meeting.
Well, so you'll have, so Park and Rec will be downstairs tomorrow at 5:30 and then transitioning hopefully up here for 7 o'clock, or there might be an overlap, you don't know, they might not finish in time. Laura, you'll be here for tomorrow, you're not here tomorrow? For the municipal? No, I'm sorry, for the MVP thing at 7:00? Who's zooming that?
I'll be here.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
No, I've been planning that all along, I haven't even told Laura about that. The Government Study Committee is going to hear from two FOG committee members, that's form of government. One is Charlie Cristello, who was recently retired from Middleborough. And the other one is Blythe, Blythe Robinson, who is just retired from Norfolk as the town administrator. I don't know what they're going to say, but they're two smart people, and I think they'll be helpful to the mission of the Government Study Committee. A young man came in today who was working on his Eagle Scout badge, and he would like to do a project in the trail that connects our memorial park and swings around to the other. He, he lives, is it?
Country, Country Club, I believe.
Yeah, the Country Club.
It's the one we talked about?
Yeah, and what he wants to do is to put a, an installation where someone using the trail can sign up. I said to him, who's gonna sign up? He said, well, some people will do it because they want to be safe, so that if the person goes missing while they're on the trail, there'll be a record at the, at the mouth of the trail, this person is in there somewhere, so. It's a registry, basically, and sounded like a good idea, I'm gonna certainly talk to the Park and Rec about it. But he, his name is Jason Damaris.
Right.
Yeah. Have you heard from him?
I talked to his father a couple months ago, yeah, we kicked back some ideas, yes.
And I saw, I saw Dale also, and so.
He needs one more merit badge to be an Eagle.
Right, he's also gonna stop by and do a, for the civics type thing, he needs to interview a town official. We've had that before, Pam, you recall, so he's gonna get in touch with me.
As one who has 23, I told him I outrank him, so.
Really, two palms? We still have that sign up on the upstairs of all the Eagle Scouts with palms, et cetera, yeah, it's been a while.
I did meet this afternoon, as you know, with the Park and Rec Chair and another candidate for Park and Rec to discuss the prospect of establishing a director of parks and recreation.
She's on the commission?
She's on, yes.
Yeah, not candidate, she's one of the members of the.
She, she's gonna be a candidate for, what, one year?
Well, she's currently serving on the park board, and she's up for election, Suzanne, right.
As I said, I've sent four bids out seeking consulting services for the water department project. Mentioned the defibs again, and the chief mentioned to you that Todd Ely is retiring after 30-some years at the police department, and there's a reception for him at 2 o'clock at the police station this Thursday, as he goes off shift. That's the report.
Nice, thank you. Anything else to come before the board?
Motion due is here.
Nope, hang on a second. The other selectman's waving, the other selectman's waving his hand. Do we want to have public comment? There's a danger here.
I think John's safe.
All right, John, keep it clean.
He doesn't have to.
I trust him, I trust him.
Not since the Supreme Court ruling, you can be rude and abrasive.
State Supreme Court, don't give it to the guys in Washington.
I mean, I mean, we can do that as a board, John, if you wanted, if you want to move it up a week earlier, but he already confirmed for the 11th, I don't know if it'd be.
Did he have some conflict or something in his email?
I don't know if he had a, had a conflict for next week. I don't see it's a pressing matter that where we have to move it up another, a week. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's on you guys.
Yeah.
We have a motion before us.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.